Today is Monday and our Board of Commissioners are now in session at this time. I will call to me the order and at this time, we always begin our meeting with a prayer and we have the pledge with the flag. So I would like to ask everyone to please stand and Ivan Baker will listen to prayer and then the Nebo Crossing Boys Basketball Team will listen to pledge. So go ahead Ivan.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to meet together. We thank you for the group that's assembled to lead our county and pray for wisdom through the decisions that they need to make tonight and pray for all that are here and have things that they need to present. God, just thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you for the county that we live in, for the country we live in and for the opportunity to serve you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Alright guys, y'all listen to the pledge right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. At this time, we have the minutes before us. What's the pleasure of the board concerning approving the minutes as presented?
We approve. Second.
Okay, discussion. I want to favor say aye. Aye and opposed, lots aye. Now, we have tonight's agenda before us and what is the pleasure of the board? Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight, Mr. Wooton, that you know of?
We'd like to have a closed session and discuss personal matter.
Okay. Alright, any other items? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
We've approved the agenda.
Okay, motion, second, discussion. I want to favor say aye. Okay, now, let's go ahead and move on to the first item on our agenda and we always like to recognize achievement from people in McDowell County because we feel we got, we live in a great county and we've got a lot of very, very talented people who reside in McDowell County and so we've got a group of guys with us tonight who are state champions and we are so excited to have the Nebo Crossing varsity boys basketball team with us and their coach. Where's their coach at? There you are in the back. Come on up here, coach. We want to see the coach right here. And tell a little bit about the conference you're in, how many teams statewide and yeah, right behind the podium. Go right behind the podium.
Well, our school competes in the Carolina State Athletic Association, which there's about 28 schools and it's growing every year. I think last year there were 23, so it grew by five and they're looking at more growth in the next year and it's a North Carolina, South Carolina co-op, so we compete against Christian schools, classical academies, private schools, schools of that nature, so that would be the conference that we're in, the state association that we're a part of.
And tell us about the championship game. How bad did y'all dominate?
Well, it was close. We actually started down, what was it, 15 to 4? So they brought their best for the first part of the game, as you can tell, down 15 to 4, but the other team was just on fire. They were making, literally it felt like, you know, Coach Swepson could maybe come up and tell you a little how we were feeling on the bench, but they were just making everything they put up, but we'd been a pretty good defensive team all year, so we knew if we stick, you know, to our defensive principles, eventually they weren't going to make those shots and then we had a little fire off the bench. One of our guys came in and I think he made more threes in that game than he made all year. Kind of carried us down the stretch. It was Adam back there, he's the big smile that we're talking about. And then we, you know, we got up eight at halftime and then it was kind of back and forth and then they had a kid that came down, hit some really big shots down the stretch to keep it close and they missed a shot at the buzzer and we got to enjoy that, you know, that championship, so.
Wonderful. We are so proud of you guys and winning that title, you know, it's, having played athletics and playing college ball, you know, it's work. Anybody, I like him being on a team like that to being in the military. I never served in the military. Tony has, some of these other guys have, but boy, they own you. Your coach owns you, he's the boss and he makes you work and you can't say no to anything he says, can't do it anyway. So we want to, at this time, the board, we've got a resolution in front of us honoring the Nebo Crossing Christian Academy Boys Bulldogs Basketball Team, so first, we need to take some action as a board and gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board concerning approving the resolution tonight in honor of the achievement?
We approve. Second.
Second, discussion. I want to favor say aye. Opposed, lots aye. Okay, coach, I'd like to read this to you and then we want to bring your team up and the board wants to get with y'all and get a picture and listen to how much we think about y'all. Here's a resolution. Whereas the McDowell County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the outstanding performance by the student athletes and the coaches of the Nebo Crossing Christian Academy Boys Basketball Team during the 2018-2019 basketball season. And whereas the Nebo Crossing Christian Academy Boys Basketball Team advanced through the Carolina State Athletic Association, winning the state championship with a 57 to 55 hard-fought victory over Oak Level. And whereas, this is the first state championship for the six-year-old school. Give my hand right there, y'all. Whereas, it is appropriate and fitting for the McDowell County Board of Commissioners to recognize and congratulate head coach James Mantey. Say that right?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Assistant coaches Daniel Garner and if they're here, y'all stand up. Colton Hildebrand and Anthony Swepson.
There he is.
He's here. Alright, there you go. Team managers, Kayden Dillinger. It's Kayden here. There you go, Kayden. And Jay Jackson.
Wichita.
Wichita. Are you here? There he is. Alright, great. And team members, Ian Baker.
Ian.
Ian. I saw, see what he's gonna do. Adam Condry. Jacob Walker. Luke Condry. Brian Swepson. Jalen.
Wichita.
Wichita. Daniel Garner. Alec Condry. Orion.
Orion.
Orion. Okay, Hess. And David Vassett. Now therefore, give another hand. Now therefore, be it resolved by the members of the McDowell County Board of Commissioners, state your name, please.
Liam Graham.
Barry McPeters.
Miranda Vaughn.
Alright, that the student athletes and coaching staff of Nebo Crossing Christian Academy Boys Basketball Team are to be congratulated on winning the Carolina State Athletic Association State Championship. Let's give them a standing applause now at this time. Coach, if we can have your team up here and commissioners, let's get up there too.
They're all big.
Y'all get, we're gonna face that way and get your picture right here.
If you're in the back.
Y'all, y'all, it's like everybody in the choir wants to get to the back, so y'all get to the front now.
Oh yeah, well, these are the tall ones somewhere, they need to.
Yeah, let's get here. Y'all slide up a little bit right here. Get y'all a little closer. There you go. Now, Brenda, can you get in there? Coach, I need you to get here. Here is the resolution that the board voted to. So I'll get you out here, right here, just real quick that way and present this to you on behalf of the board, okay? So I'm gonna hold back. Alright, now, that's yours and now, let's get another picture right here. Sure.
Hey, you know which one.
Alright, y'all, let's give them another hand. Great job, guys. Alright, make it two of a kind, two of a kind, guys. Good job, Barry, guys, good job. Good job, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
Appreciate y'all having me.
But I believe that not only are they ahead in basketball, but you also are testing two years of love grade left.
Hey, thank you, guys.
Okay, we about got everybody in here, it's coming. Now, this time, we'll move on to our next item on our agenda for tonight. This is the recognition of Dr. William Maddox and we have Mr. Keller here with us tonight who will do the honors of presenting and then the board will take action regarding a resolution here in a minute. The floor is yours, Mr. Keller.
Thank you, Commissioners, Madam Clerk and Mr. Wooton. It's an honor tonight for us to present the program that Dr. William Maddox has championed for many, many years at Mission Hospital. The effects that this Code STEMI program has had on the lives of not only McDowell County citizens, but McDowell County citizens traveling in western North Carolina, not to mention all of the family guests that travel into this region on a daily basis. His work is nothing short of, I'm not sure what word you use to describe it because we have seen the effects of his work. Kind of at a loss of words. Let me kind of set the stage and give a little bit of background for someone that doesn't know what, or have never heard of Code STEMI program. Years ago, in the early to even late 90s, if you had a heart attack and you called 911, an ambulance would arrive, they would treat you with some advanced cardiac drugs and take you to the local hospital. At that local hospital, there was one therapy available that was a clot buster, but for a lot of patients, that clot buster wasn't effective. They needed to be transported onto a heart center to where they would go to a cath lab. A cardiologist would do a heart catheterization and remove the clot that was blocking the artery and causing the heart muscle to be injured, if not die. The mortality rate was certainly much higher than it is today, but along came the Code STEMI program that Dr. Maddox was a huge champion and an architect of. It started initially as an internal program, but quickly spread to EMS agencies in the early 2000s and that's when McDowell EMS got on board with this program and that totally revamped how we treat heart attack patients. Today, just like we did back in the early 2000s, if you call and you're having chest pain or symptoms of a heart attack, EMS paramedics do the same EKG that is done in an emergency room. They administer the same types of drugs, they administer an IV line, but they interpret that 12-lead EKG. And if we see that that person is having an acute heart attack, that Code STEMI program is initiated and it's activated. The paramedic calls Mission Hospital. Mission Hospital activates the program. Mission Hospital calls the cath lab team in that may be asleep at 3:00 in the morning in their houses in Buncombe County and beyond, but the goal is to have the cath lab ready when we arrive with that patient at Mission Hospital. We transport all of our acute heart attack patients directly to the cath lab at Mission if we've activated the Code STEMI program. So what in turn does that do? It saves heart muscle, it saves 40-year-old men and women from being on oxygen tanks for the rest of their life, it preserves life, it allows families to enjoy their loved ones for many years to come, as you'll hear in just a minute. What Dr. Maddox has led and championed, he won't take credit for any of it, but I'm gonna do my best tonight to give him as much credit as I can because...
Can I object?
Dr. Maddox was the champion and the voice for EMS. He has a unique ability to cut through the noise, cut to the chase and get exactly what is needed to be done accomplished and puts everything else aside and goes right after what needs to be done for the patient and that's what I've remembered and enjoyed working within, is he's a no-nonsense, let's take, let's get it done approach and what's in the best interest of the patient. At this time, I want to call Sergeant Parker up that works for our agency for a couple of words. Some of you have heard this before, but I think it's important for Dr. Maddox to hear
Good evening. For those of you don't know me, my name is Sergeant Johnson Parker. I've worked for McDowell County EMS since 2007 and I want to tell you a story about a STEMI that happened in McDowell County. On January 11th, 2013, around 7:00 PM, a 50-year-old man began having chest pain. He turned pale and started sweating. He told his wife that he needed to lay down. She refused to let him lay down and instead activated the 911 system. She put him in the car and started towards town to meet the ambulance. While they were driving to town, the man told his wife he wasn't going to make it and that he loved her. The man then went unconscious as they pulled it into the parking lot beside the WBRM line North Garden Street. McDowell County EMS arrived within a minute of the couple's arrival. The paramedics worked quickly and performed an EKG on the patient in the field, which showed that he was experiencing a very large STEMI or heart attack. The ambulance left the scene quickly and began the transport straight to Mission Hospital towards the heart catheterization lab, which is where he needed to be. They called ahead and let the hospital know what they had. The hospital in turn alerted the cath lab team and prepared to do an emergency heart catheterization. While en route, the man went into cardiac arrest, which means his heart stopped. The paramedics quickly defibrillated him. This happened three times during the trip. After each defibrillation, the man would become conscious again. They arrived at Mission only 44 minutes after the time of the 911 call. As they took the patient in the door, he was awake. He told his wife that he was going to die and to tell the kids that he loved them. He went back into cardiac arrest and the paramedics defibrillated him again and started CPR as they were going past the emergency room and going straight to the catheterization lab. They continued defibrillating him and performing CPR in the hall of the hospital, in the elevator and all the way into the cath lab. Once he had the initial catheterization, he had another heart attack and the team at Mission quickly performed another catheterization. By the end, he had three catheterizations and four stents put in place. Now, this man's heart stopped multiple times, which causes the brain to be deprived of oxygen, which can cause brain damage. However, because of the system of care put into place by Dr. Maddox and the paramedics who worked so quickly defibrillating him each time his heart stopped, he woke up neurologically intact. This man is alive and well today. He doesn't need oxygen, he doesn't have congestive heart failure or many of the other complications that many heart attack survivors have. He is able to work and provide for his wife and children. He hikes and swims and has normal life, all thanks to the timely, aggressive treatment performed by the paramedics at McDowell County EMS and the system of STEMI care that Dr. Maddox and his team has built. Since this, that time, since the time of the heart attack, this man has celebrated his 20th wedding anniversary. He's had five more Christmases, five more birthdays, five more family vacations and recently was present to watch his son get married. This is just one of the hundreds of stories of excellent STEMI care that could be told here today, but this story is my favorite because this man is my husband and the wife who was afraid and fell all alone in the parking lot of WBRM that night was me. I was never more happy to see those lights and sirens to come to help me and to know that those people that I worked with day in and day out were coming to use their extraordinary talents to save someone that I love. I can honestly say that because of Dr. Maddox and his team at McDowell County EMS, I still have my husband and the kids still that have their dad.
To help us recognize Dr. Maddox, there's several guests I'd like to recognize. Angie Salisbury, who is the Code STEMI coordinator at Mission, fantastic friend and works week after week with us to move the Code STEMI program forward. Ned Fowler, EMS regional liaison. Ned, we appreciate you being here. Outstanding friend to McDowell EMS. Carol Wolfenberger, the president of Mission Hospital McDowell. Thank you. Angie Pettis, the ER director at McDowell. Thank you, Angie. This entire team works relentless to move the Code STEMI program forward. Dr. Maddox, Sergeant Parker, I have personal experience and I've told you before, you're instrumental in keeping my grandfather alive for many years after his heart attack and you've touched countless lives through western North Carolina. That's why we felt so strongly about recognizing your work. We think too many people retire and their stories go untold. But it's my opinion, your vision of the Code STEMI program, your hard work, your dedication, those early morning meetings you would call at 7:00 AM and absolutely lay the groundwork of what's going to be done by EMS and the hospital is going to live on for many, many years and the impact you've had in western North Carolina didn't stop when you retired, sir. The folks watching at home, the folks in this room have probably never heard of Code STEMI program, but they should feel a lot better knowing today and tonight that if that heart attack does happen, there's a program in place that gives world-class cardiac care from Franklin to McDowell County, from west to east, and we thank you for your service,
Can I object, ma'am? We've been here before. It was a little scary seeing all y'all up there. Last time, this time it's easy. I just want to say that I, my dad, who had his first heart attack at 62, second one at 76, died at 89. I just have to say that, as I told someone here in the room right now, that my father, every time we heard a siren, this was before they had the little radios, dad would get in the car with me, we shouldn't do this, and would chase after the ambulance or the fire. And I always wanted to be a paramedic. It was really my dream and I know we wouldn't, shouldn't have done that, I mean, I realize that and my dad's a pretty reasonable man, but we always, when we heard a siren, needed to go after it. The stories you heard, they didn't mean to do it, but the stories you heard were all about them, about the initial responder, the telephone call to us, the definition of what happened and the diagnosis, it's all them. And you notice there wasn't a whole lot said about us in the hospital because it's all done here and this community and a couple of others were really kind of the very first facilities that we worked with, particularly within the paramedic program. Clicked with me as I went through it that there were just about three hospitals that we decided we wanted to divert directly to the cath lab because they're close enough and they can do it and going into an ER, taking some time, then getting on the road, it does make a difference and it's the paramedics that do it. And a lot of people, Angie included, I don't ever compliment Angie, but she occasionally does some good things. They've done a wonderful job, but the truth of the matter is the paramedics, the paramedic programs, the leadership, this community and a couple of other communities is what got this whole thing going. So again, I object and...
Dr. Maddox, on behalf of the board, we appreciate the work that you've done and to hear the story and we've heard before, it's just a miracle that miracles happen every day and as you said, starts, you got your end up there, but these guys and girls on our end, we, the people in McDowell County don't, maybe they do, they may do. The training, the, we've seen, we've seen them, they've done a simulation before for the board and we've seen the reaction time, the knowledge, the protocol and Commissioner Peters was paramedic for many years and teaches the program now, but our hats off to you, men and women, because you guys and ladies, you're front lines and you, you're the first stop and you save lives every day and listen, how much can you put upon the life of your husband? Million dollars, two million dollars? Incapable. And so, thank you for what you do. You guys, y'all save lives every day and sometimes it may seem as if you, you know, you don't do it because you want to be recognized, that's not why you do it and it's not just a job to you and we understand that. You want to, you got a desire to help people, so this board really appreciates the work y'all do, just outstanding. Hats, hats off to our group and then the mission group and the partnership and the training and the cooperation that you give this county via the hospital and your staff and is just truly remarkable and our board values that partnership too. We know that HCA is coming into play now and we hope that we can have just a continuation of that cooperation service moving forward to provide positive outcomes for people here in McDowell County. So thanks to everybody. Now, the board has to take some action. We've got a resolution that the board needs to vote on and this resolution is in honor of Dr. Maddox and what he's done. As William said, a lot of times people retire and we seem to forget people who started things or pioneered things and sort of got the ball rolling and we never want to do that. We got to always remember where it started at and who had a part in that, so that's what we're doing tonight. So, did I hear a motion from our board concerning the resolution, which Vice Chairman Brown will read here in a second, to adopt this resolution tonight in honor of Dr. Maddox?
Make a motion, approve resolution.
Okay, do we have a second? Discussion? I want to favor say aye. Aye and opposed, lots aye. At this time, Commissioner Brown is going to present the resolution, he's going to read it and then he'll present it and the board will come out, Dr. Maddox, and we're going to get our picture made with you, okay? We know you're really looking forward to that.
Well, it's more of an honor to us, Dr. Maddox, than it is for having you here to recognize you for this. You're getting recognized, but the honor is ours and we feel extremely honored, our whole board does and that was, Sergeant Parker, that was a heartfelt message that you sent out a while ago and I almost cried one time watching Grizzly Adams, so this one was about all I could say, but anyway, it was touching and that's the kind of work that you've done and that you are responsible for, Dr. Maddox, and we appreciate that. Resolution, appreciation for Dr. William Maddox. Whereas, Dr. William Maddox was born in Rome, Georgia and attended the Medical College of Georgia. And whereas, Dr. Maddox began his medical career at Parkland Hospital in Dallas, Texas, with a focus on internal medicine. And whereas, Dr. Maddox began his study of cardiology in 1982 with a fellowship at the University of Alabama, Birmingham. And whereas, Dr. Maddox began his career at Mission Health in 1982, where he worked to pioneer chemical treatment of heart attacks. And whereas, he served as the representative of the race, repugnation of acute...
It's tough, huh?
Yeah, yeah. My old cardio, cardio, whatever.
Heart attack.
And that's why David wanted me to read this. In Carolina Emergency Departments for nearly 15 years and whereas, while the number of lives he has directly saved in the lab and indirectly saved through his support of McDowell EMS is unknown, the support of Dr. Maddox over his 36 years of employment with Mission Hospital has undoubtedly been felt by thousands of patients throughout western North Carolina. Now therefore, be it resolved that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners do hereby express their appreciation for the hard work and dedication of Dr. William Maddox and for his years of support for the EMS adopted this day, the 11th of March, 2019. Thank you very much, Dr. Maddox.
Dr. Maddox, let's get you up here. Come on, I need the board out there, too.
Not by myself.
No, we need some board. We're going to go get a couple around here.
Okay.
We're going to get the board around you, yeah.
Oh, good, good.
And then we're going to bring Grizzly up here. You are the man of the hour here. You are the man of the hour here.
Where are you going?
And then we say, well, Peter, see you guys. Let's get you up here.
Okay. There you go.
You take one more, so you can try and push him.
Now, let's get, I want EMS up here. Where are you, my y'all? Let's get you up here, too. Charles, I want you, get you up here. Where are you? Thank you, Dr. Maddox. Okay, y'all, at this time we'll move to item C on our appointment schedule. And this time, I will declare the board in a public hearing for a economic development project pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 158-7.1. And we have our economic development coordinator with us tonight, Mr. Abernathy. So, Mr. Abernathy, come on up, sir, and present, and then we'll take comment, and then we'll move out of the public hearing.
Thank you. It's always nice to come back and really impressive what's happening and all of the good things that you guys do. It's really, really nice. Well, as Chairman Walker said, the North Carolina statutes require a public hearing to be held to give the public an opportunity to comment any time that public dollars are used for an economic development or a private purpose. And so, the North Carolina Constitution lays out what constitutes a public purpose. And courts have determined that what we do is in fact something that can be done. We've got four building reuse projects right now that are being processed that have happened over the last six months that involve Baxter, Ethan Allen, Crane Resistiflex, and Toolcraft. And I'll stand corrected, but I believe all four have met their employment goals that were set out in the hearings, and all four of those will be shut down as soon as all of the requirements are met. So we've got two, we've got this one tonight and then an update on the one that we had last month. The one tonight is an existing company. It's a, it's a small company that employs 29 or 30, 30 people. And they are considering expanding their operation in McDowell County. They have an operation in another state. The public hearing notice said 15 additional people. I've had conversations with them that were more than 15. They have reduced the number down to 12. And so, why would they do that? Companies want to be conservative with what they commit to because that turns into their obligation. And they don't want to be obligated if it's not necessary. So a lot of times, these numbers are very conservative, and I think that this will be the case as well. But the numbers do change, and I don't do that on purpose. It's just a process, and as you, as you go through it, things are very fluid. Company will invest $850,000 in new machinery and equipment and building, and they are purchasing a building where they are currently leasing. So oftentimes, these projects stabilize, in addition to the new stuff that happens, it stabilizes what you've got. And so, in this case, those jobs are more protected and the company is making a larger investment in the county by purchasing a building as opposed to leasing it, which is good news. So what we're proposing is to participate, again, in the, in the building reuse program. Now, the one that we'll do in a few minutes uses another program on top of that. But the building reuse program does a dollar-for-dollar match. $12,500 was submitted and is being recommended. Again, when we ran the public hearing notice, we were looking at $10,000 a job, but the state came in and increased, increased that number. So we're looking at a state grant of around $150,000. Again, the number, the number will be a little fluid, which has to be matched. So you're looking at $300,000 worth of, worth of improvements with the state doing 150, the company doing 45% or approximately 142,500, and McDowell County doing 7,500. So it's an astonishing return on investment. $7,500 for $850,000 worth of investment, plus the stabilization of 30 jobs and the creation of at least 13, 13 new jobs. So what's required is for you to receive comment from the public, and then we ask that you give us your direction.
Okay. This time we'll start on the right-hand side. If you wish to make comment concerning the information you've heard tonight, just state your name and we'll hear you gladly. So we'll start on the front row. Okay? Second row. Third row. Last row. Left-hand side, second row. Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead, state your name and comment, please.
My name's Wendy Otten. And of these 12 jobs, is there an idea about what the, is it an hourly or what would be a salary?
Great question. And there are two requirements that the state has in relationship to what the employees receive. One is that a wage test be met. And so there is an average manufacturing wage. I didn't bring the number with me, but it's approximately $35,000 as an annual salary. And the company has to meet that as an, as a salary that they would pay on average, taking all 13 jobs and averaging them out. So the jobs are good-paying jobs. The second requirement is that the company must provide and make available medical insurance for the employees. And so, both of those conditions were met. I appreciate the question.
Okay. All right, you say.
My name's Wendy Otten. I have a second question.
I hope it's as easy as the first.
I think it is. One of, one of the things that's touted on McDowell County right now is that the unemployment rate is just over 3%. Is that a problem bringing in with economic development situations? Do we have the number of people that are available to fill these positions?
Yeah. That's even a better question. Would be an hour to answer fully, but let me, let me give you, yes, yes, it's a problem. Companies are, where they're considering expanding, let's say they've got nine or 10 operations worldwide or in this nation, and they're looking at where they want to expand, and there's all kinds of variables that would go into that decision. And one of the variables may very well be what's the availability of labor, what's the skill level of the population, what's the average wage that might be paid, as well as a lot of other considerations. So it is limiting, excuse me, it is limiting our growth. And there's no, there's no question. Now, a good question to that would be as a follow-up, well, what are we doing about it? You know, are we just throwing our hands up and saying, you know, that's what we're dealing with, or are we addressing it? And we've got really a number of things that the county has done, such as investing in the Universal Advanced Manufacturing Training Center, which is, which is an item, investing in the Workplace Wellness Program, investing in the Employment Strategic Plan, which is a plan looking at how to move people, and this is actually federal news right now. How do we move people from the non-workforce into the workforce? That was on the news today, and the fact that people are leaving the workforce. Well, how do we, how do we encourage or incentivize people to go to work? And it's, it's really a good question. But yes, it does limit our ability to grow, as do other things, like housing is also a limiting factor. Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Where you need?
All right. Well, this makes it into my fourth question. What is the skill level that will be required for the jobs?
Of these jobs? I, you know, how do you characterize skill level? I characterize it as a moderate skill level. It's like routers and machining. It's not just assembly work, where you're putting things together. There's actually, there is actually a skill. But it's not, it's not high skill as in technology and computer-driven, driven types of employment. So it's a good question.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak on the second row? All right, third row. All right? Don't hear much of them. Go ahead and say it. Motion? Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose a light sign. Okay. Mr. Williams, anything you need to add to that?
No, sir. It's great company.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board concerning the requested action by staff?
Move that we advise staff to go ahead with the project.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose a light sign. Okay, great. Now, Chuck, you're on here again at 5:45, and we're almost there, so we'll get started. We have got, "Universal Property Update" is the title, and you're here regarding a lease approval.
Yeah, and can we do the second one first?
Yeah, let's do the second.
And since I'm here, I'll hurry up and do it. Okay, so, so as I said, we had a public hearing last month, similar to the one that we, that we just had on a, on a new company that is considering locating to McDowell County that is currently in production in a, in another state. And so you've held that public hearing, and the state is in the process of, in fact, they have recommended what's called a One North Carolina Grant, which we expect to be funded, which would be in the amount of $2,000 a job. Now, we talked about that last, last month. Why I'm back on this, and my memo has a real mistake in it, where I say 150 to 600, 100 volts, that should be amps, on the electrical and not, not volts. So I apologize for that. What last month, though, was not clear, was the building reuse part of this. And if you remember, the county owns the building, unlike the other five now that we're processing. This is one where we're the owner. So the incentive offered to the company, this was for 30 jobs, and again, the number might be, might be quite a bit more, was to lease 40,000 square feet at a dollar a foot for one year as opposed to $2. So the county receives $40,000 in income off that last vacant space in the building and builds the incentive in through that reduction in the lease. So you really don't have money that is, that's going, that's going into the, into the project. Now, I said last, last month that we wanted to do a building reuse and that we were in the process of doing that. So you've got a memo in your packet. So what we have done is submitted a building reuse grant that is in the amount of, let's see here, 600, $120,000. And so that 120, that the state would, would put up to do various improvements to our building has to be matched. And so as I said last month, who's going to meet the match? How's that going to work? And how much of it should fall on the new tenant and how much of it should fall on us? So I've talked to Terry, I've talked to Ashley, we've gone through, and we're leaving a little money on the table with what we're, with what we're proposing. In other words, we're not proposing to use all of that state grant, which is kind of not something that, that I like, but it's what we're doing. So we're looking at $45,350. And if you look at your memo, that would, that would come to us from the state instead of 60. So we're leaving about $15,000, which we may come back and add something, something to it. But again, that 45,350 has to be matched. So you see a list of about five things. And so, let me walk through, and there's kind of a combination of what seems fair as the owner of the building for the county to pay for, and what seems fair for the, for the, for the new company if they locate here. So the electrical upgrade going from 150 to 600 amps is estimated at $38,000, and we're saying that the new owner or the new company should pay for that. Painting and steam cleaning the floors, painting all the doors, $20,000, we're saying the owner, the new company should pay for that. The plumbing and the meter, we're saying the county should pay for that. That's $11,460. The converting the heating units to natural gas is $4,741. We're saying the county should pay for that. And the dock door has to be enlarged, there's two of them, $16,150. We're saying the new company should pay for that. So think about what you're, what you're getting here for a total of $16,201, which would be the county share, you're getting $90,701 in improvements. And what, what we would suggest is you take the $40,000 that you're going to receive in lease payment and simply use proceeds from that to come up with the $16,000. You're, you're getting your building improved, you're creating 30 jobs, and you're still making a little money. Wanted to be clear on that. Probably requires some acknowledgement or vote or make sure that we're all together with what we're doing. Ashley, is that clear, do you think, with what I?
Okay. A recommendation of staff is to go ahead and proceed with this.
Terry was serious. We'll work through the views with Chuck.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good. Spend 16 to get 90,000, and our building's improved, so what's the pleasure of the board?
Permission to move forward.
Second discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose a light sign. Okay? Chuck, that's the second. What's your first? Let's go to the lease now.
Okay, so the third is the universal site, and I'm not going to do thank goodness as much.
And we do have the lease for approval.
Okay.
We've talked about it last month and this month, just formality.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board concerning the lease?
We approve the lease.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose a light sign. Okay? Now, Chuck, let's go on to the sites.
All right, so quickly, when you're, when you're recruiting companies in order, what companies typically are looking for are modern empty buildings, if you can imagine that. Most of the activity that we receive or don't receive are companies looking to purchase a building that is, is empty and not currently being in use. They look to do that because of the price that they can purchase that building for versus building it new, and we could talk about that. A second ranking or consideration would be what's called a shovel-ready site. Actually, a shell building would be, would be second. Third would be a shovel-ready site where you've got everything graded and all of your infrastructure in place. And so we, we really have none of the above with what we're currently doing. We really don't have a modern empty building, we don't have a shell building, and we've got one small graded site left in the, in the original industrial park. So again, like I said to the lady back here, what are you doing about it? Okay, so we received about 24 months ago, and it may have been before two of you were on the board, a grant from a federal program called the Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC. And we received it in the amount of a million and a half dollars to help construct roads and to do some, some very initial grading of sites on the universal property. And this board has been involved in receiving master plans and receiving updates and documents through the, through the course of time. So I apologize to anyone that's new, that maybe we need to catch up on, but something that we've been talking about. The federal government has reduced the grant at least twice, and I think maybe three times, from a million five to a million two to a million, and we're now at $600,000. And so, you know, what, what started off with something that was really... And, and so, you know, what, what started off with something that was really grand is, is now, now kind of limited. So that's what we, what we wanna, what we wanna talk to you about. We're still going to be able to do some things and we're still going to propose proceeding because if we don't, then this, these are all going to be county dollars that we'll be looking somehow to, to obtain. So it's still good news. Um, now we've met, again, Ashley is, is real involved in this as well. Uh, I'm going to inter, introduce Mike LaVoy, who is a, a civil engineer that has been involved in this, uh, and he is going to basically give you an overview of what we're proposing and how it would work. So thank you.
Hope y'all are doing, doing well this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, stand before you this evening and give you a little history and a little update on what's been going on. Um, I've been working with, uh, Mr. Abernathy and, um, and Ashley as well for the last few years. Um, this project has been around for a long time. I'm sure most of you, I hope, I know most of you are aware of it. Um, and we actually started, uh, early on with this project, um, working with Duke Energy, um, and did a Duke readiness, um, program with this site. Uh, and that included, um, us going out and doing a lot of initial preliminary investigations to, uh, work the site towards an industrial park. Um, and Duke worked with us a little bit to put a presentation together and we've come a little way since then. We've done a little extra work, done some master planning and whatnot past that. Um, and this is kind of, this is the, uh, the drawing from the master plan that we did a little while back. And, um, you could see, um, this is the existing building here, um, that's being used now by the college as well as some other companies. Um, and then, um, this is College Drive coming in. Um, the college is located just up here off the page. Um, and what we're, what we were proposing was to come in here and look at this site. This is a, a fairly steep terrain area that's fully wooded right now. And, um, our goal, um, from the beginning was to use, uh, and accentuate this pond that's located on the site and, um, offer a couple of larger scale buildings, these two buildings, um, try to offer a couple larger scale buildings that would be, um, able to look out over that pond. Um, and they could use the, uh, pond and the surrounding areas recreation for their employees and whatnot. And so that was kind of, um, one of the driving factors for trying to put the pond online was kind of to implement a little bit of a recreation and wellness aspect to this industrial park, um, which I think companies these days are, are really looking for, for their employees. Um, and so as you know, College Drive is, is in good shape right now and it's had a new water line brought up and we've got, um, most of the utilities are in place. And what we're going to look at specifically tonight, um, I just wanted to show you this master plan to give you a bird's eye view of where we are. This road that we have designed here, um, up to this 200,000 square foot building that is just, um, for visual, um, whether or not an actual 200,000 square foot building goes there, we're not 100% sure of. But, um, this road right here is what we're, um, referring to now as Pond Road. And then this road on this side, um, we're referring to as Shell Road. We were, we were hoping to one day maybe do a shell building back here that's, uh, 50,000 square feet, expandable 50,000 with truck court and parking for the employees, everything. Um, but right now, what we are gonna actually focus on a little bit, let me, um, see here. All right, so this is, this is the, a little zoomed in version. And, uh, what I want to show you right now, what we're going for with ARC originally, we, with the ARC, um, grant, we had, um, as Chuck had mentioned, we were looking for a larger sum. However, they've, they've kind of knocked us down and knocked us down. So originally, we were looking at all of Shell Road, um, developing all of Shell Road and developing all of Pond Road, um, with the grant. However, um, now things have changed a little bit. So what we're looking to do is, uh, let's see if I can zoom in just a little bit for you. Here. And so what we're looking to do at this time is to, um, with the $600,000 that they are willing to give us, or, well, they're willing to entertain giving us, I should say, um, would include at this time constructing all of Pond Road, um, all the way to a cul-de-sac, at which time there's, the, the cul-de-sac is a little lower than the top of the mountain. This is the top of the mountain. You can see that circle right there that kind of represents the peak, um, which is at an elevation a good bit higher than the cul-de-sac. But we can't build the road up to the top of the mountain because we have to cut some of the mountain down in order to make a big pad for the future industrial building. So what we've done is we've designed this so that we could stop the cul-de-sac short of the, of the building path. And, um, we have, what we looked at is we can grade this so that we could take, um, prospects up there. And actually, what we want to do beyond ARC grant is to maybe even try to put in some county funds as well so that we could grade a road out here that would get you out to the, to the, um, area over here on this side that would allow you to look over the pond and see the nice view and stuff and kind of visualize at the elevation of what the footprint would be for the building, give them a future visualization of what, what elevation they would be at. Um, because basically this is going to require cutting about 45 feet or so of the mountaintop off and spreading that dirt out in order to make, um, a nice pad. We have done some rock work, um, or we have done some borings. We were a little concerned walking the site, I was a little concerned with rock. We did do some borings. There was some rock that was found, um, in this area. However, it was about 60 foot deep. Um, so we, at one time, we had this building, actually, uh, the 200 square foot building down and lower and the smaller one up high. However, we switched those because we were worried about rock in this area. Um, so we feel like we have a plan, a master plan here put together that is constructible in the field that will not require a ton of, of rock work. So we've, we feel pretty good about that at this time. We would, um, and so let me switch over. So, and then, so with the, with the Pond Road, um, the 600,000, it also requires with, because the federal funds are involved, with ARC, um, giving us the money, they're federal funded, so there's some, also some environmental work that has to take place. Um, we've been working with DOT here recently to, what we have to do is we have to get DOT on board with us to basically support this as a project and to back us saying that we're, that they are okay with us coming in and designing, permitting these roads and working with them to construct them and then turn the roads over as an industrial road to NSODOT for, for future upkeep and maintenance that, that would be required in the future. And right now, they are on board with us, so far, so good. They feel pretty good about things. So what we did is we went back and reworked, um, the cost estimates to make sure that we're using the full 600,000, but yet we're only able to build all, we're able to build all of Pond Road, but we would only be able to build Shell Road just a little ways in, oh, excuse me, just a little ways in, in order to give, um, prospects potential of viewing where, where the potential is. Um, and so, um, we're, we're looking at about 800 feet of Pond Road, of a Shell Road, I mean, and about, um, 1,000 feet of Pond Road. And just to, um, so let me give you two, let's see if I can, this mouse is a little tricky on this, show you a, a nice pretty picture here of what, so this is the site. Um, and this is Pond Road as we, uh, have it designed with this tan area being a cul-de-sac. So I'm going to flip over real quick, uh, real, to this one. So this is just the universal site and this is, um, you can see the existing building down here and this is the universal site. And this will just kind of give you a, a visual of what the grading is going to entail. Pond Road is actually, um, a very, uh, it lays in here really nicely. Um, it would be at a, 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 at the beginning of the road, you're running around a five to, to eight percent grade. And then as you get further into the site, it jumps up to 14, but, um, truckers are pretty used to doing that up here in the mountainous regions and whatnot. And it gets you up to the top of the mountain. But, uh, just wanted to show you, um, here, this is kind of a representation of what, let's see if I can control this thing. I'm new at this. This is a new program we've just had. But so you can see the cut slope that would be there, that would be up to get to the top of the mountain. But what we're proposing at this time is to go ahead and create a gravel bed road that would then pull out along the side of the mountain and come out here at an elevation, like I mentioned, that would be close to the elevation of the building. And then, um, as you can see, we could create a little pad, a little turnaround here that would be a nice spot for them to visualize where their building would end up sitting and looking over this nice valley and the ponds and everything. We really feel like it would be something that would help to, um, to really improve their vision of what can, what can happen with the site. So what I'm, what we're proposing in some sense is to work with ARC to build the cul-de-sac and then it would be, it would be on our, our backs to do a little more extra grading in order to get this out. Now, I also wanted to show you too, um, so looking at this, this would be the minimum work that would be needed in order to get somebody out on the site to really see what they're dealing with. And so what we also went ahead and did was created the same image using, um, the proposed Pond Road as well as going ahead and showing these, um, these two, these two sites, um, graded. I mean, cause the, you know, when I talk with Chuck and I don't, um, want to say anything that necessarily will think you make this, it has to happen, but what would be the biggest vision would be, the, the, the largest vision here would be to eventually create these shovel-ready sites. Folks that aren't in the mountains and aren't dealing with grading a lot, they have a hard time visualizing what could be, what could be out here when you're looking at a mountain. They're like, how could you put a building on there? But, um, as you can see with this drawing, you know, we've, we've, um, we've got the buildings, uh, worked in here, um, and the grades actually lay out pretty fairly well. You end up with a fairly steep slope in between the two buildings and, but that actually works good because it puts the, the larger building on top where they can see right over the, the smaller building, which I liked a lot. Um, and, uh, let's see if I can drive you around this site a little bit. Ah, this, these controls are a little backwards. Let's see here. I don't want to get anybody sick. Let's see if I can spin this thing around. There we go. There we go. All right, so I wanted to show you from this side as well. So you can see the cut slope. This is parking enough for around, uh, 240 parking places, I believe, with a large truck court on this side of the building. Um, and then, um, as you come around, they have a small, a small slope on the side of their building. So it would be very easy access down there to the pond area for them. Um, and I would envision us putting some type of trail system down from here as well that would go down to the pond. But you can see, um, that these pads do work on top of the mountain. There is, like I say, a decent amount of, of earthworks that goes along with it. But this will give you an idea of the entire perspective of, oh, let's see here. Ah, I'm sorry. This is my hardest part of the job. I guess. They have, they've got these controls backwards where when you think you're zooming in, you're actually zooming out. When you think you're going left, you're going right. And maybe it has something to do with a left-handed person or something, but starting to get the hang of it a little bit. So this is, uh, just shows you, all right, that's not, let's see here. That's kind of a top overlay. So this is the, this is where the cul-de-sac would be. I didn't have, I didn't have the ability to grade the cul-de-sac in and have the, the site graded in. But as you can see, um, the two pads, this is a 100,000 square foot building, about 10 acres, both of them around 10 acres or so in size, and this is 200,000 square foot. Um, so then, um, I want to run through real quick, um, just a couple more minutes here, real quick. So with this, uh, design you're seeing, now what I wanted to do is just kind of run through. Um, these numbers are based on the latest numbers that I've been able to get from DOT and whatnot. So I feel certain that DOT will go along with this cost estimate and, um, and back it up very easily for us, which we need them to do in order to send this to ARC. But basically what you're talking about for the roads and the paving, which includes the stone, um, and the asphalt and a binder course, um, and the, and the striping, you're looking at about 142.5 for that. And then for the actual site work in order to get ready to lay the pavement down and whatnot for clearing and grubbing and grading, um, so forth, um, all the erosion control measures that are needed, a little bit of storm drainage that would be required, you're around 133,000. Now, based on what NC DOT has told us, they would be involved, they gave us three options. They said either one, you can hire a private firm to do the design and permitting and then use DOT to help, uh, bid and award the job and then also do the inspections. So the second option was for DOT to source themselves out the design and permitting and for them to, of course, to do the, uh, the construction, the bidding and award and the construction administration. And then the third option was for the county to bid it out and go through DOT. Um, the most flexibility is for you guys to use a private firm, which is hence why I'm here, one of the reasons I'm here, because we have a lot more flexibility to do things the way you guys want to do it and hand a project to DOT that, that you, that we all agree on that works best for the county, instead of just handing it over to DOT and them coming in and, and giving us a product that might not work as well. Um, one of the things that isn't required with the DOT study, um, because of the federal funds, I'm getting back to now, um, the environmental study that's required, um, there's an archaeological arm of that. There's a state historic preservation study that has to be done. There's a tribal historic preservation, the Thipoe and the Shippoe, as we call. Um, there's also a threatened endangered species study that'll have to be done on the project. And then there would be the NC DOT bidding and award and the NC DOT inspections, which is construction administration, basically. And so those items, we don't have an exact number on, but based on DOT's, uh, previous projects, they gave us a number of about 20%. So what we had to do unfortunately was take 20% or $120,000 out of this budget that will pay DOT to do this environmental study that's required from a, from a federal standpoint. Okay? And so with that, with everything, uh, constructing the road and the environmental study for both roads, um, you're looking at around $396,000, uh, for Pond Road. And then we flip over to, um, to Shell Road and we're looking at about 800 feet of it. And again, um, it did not, it, this, this cost estimate here does not include the, uh, the environmental stuff. I just went ahead and, and this actually laid out really nice. Um, I had taken a guesstimate as to where the road would end based on the best constructibility phase and, and it dropped in numbers that were perfect. I came in about three, uh, the first time I went through it, I was about, uh, $3,000 off the 600,000. So I was real happy. So now here we are at 204,000 for the Shell Road and then the, uh, 396 for the, uh, for Pond Road, which equals the $600,000 that ARC would be looking for. Can I answer any questions at this time before we go any further?
So either way, the, um, items, the, uh, the endangered species, the, uh, archaeology, that's got to be done whether we go with the state to handle administrance or a private.
That is correct. That's correct, Mr. Walker. Yes, sir. Um, and, and it's just because of the federal funds. In other words, if Bunkin County, I mean, if McDowell County wanted to, uh, take this project on their own and not use ARC funds, that wouldn't have to be necessarily done. But with the federal funds being implemented, it has to be done.
Does it have to be done twice, once for each project?
No, ma'am, it doesn't. That's why I only show you on one cost estimate because it would be done for, and what I'm expecting that they would also do with this is that they would go ahead and do it for the entire length of Shell Road. So that, really the entire property, the, we're looking at about 100 to 120 acres of industrial property that includes a large portion of McDowell County's property as well as a little bit of the City of Marion's property too. And so we're working in conjunction with them. We've been dealing with Bob over there and, um, they're on board with everything. And so it does include property from both, both entities. And what I would hope is that that environmental study would go ahead and include the entire 100 acres, 100, 120 acres for the industrial site so that there's no issue for that in the future. So, um, anything else?
Any comments, questions?
Well, just to, just to go a little further then, I don't want to overwhelm you, but I do want to just, um, Chuck and I thought it would be, um, good to go ahead and show you guys some, uh, numbers for a shovel-ready site, which basically would include, uh, fully grading the site to a nice, um, flat pad that would interest prospects much more, um, to come in and be able to get started to work fairly quickly. Um, and some of those numbers, uh, for the sites are, here, I've done a cost estimate. This is for the 100,000 square foot building and the 100,000 square foot pad, which again is about, it was about nine acres, I do believe. Um, but just to, to cut to the chase here on this one, let's see if I can increase this a little bit so you can see it. Um, we're right around with, uh, the erosion control, storm drainage, um, adding enough stone on the site that would give you about a 20,000 square foot pad of stone that would allow you to be able to drive a vehicle out there, set up a tent or anything if you were trying to bring more than one prospect in in a day or something like that, as well as. bring more than one prospect in in a day, or something like that, as well as grading the entire site, doing all the erosion control to stabilize it, regrassing it, runs around 550,000 without contingency. With a small contingency on there, we're right around $628,000 for shovel-ready site. And again, that's for 100,000 square foot building. And then for the larger building, it is quite a bit more, let me just, just to give you an idea, over here, we're looking at moving around 130,000 yards of dirt on the 100,000 square foot project, which we have spoken with a couple of folks from McDowell County about doing that, and we hope this price is somewhat accurate. But, so for the 100,000, you're looking at around 130,000 yards of dirt. But for the larger pad, you're looking at around 100,000 yards extra, around 230,000 yards of dirt. As I said before, you're dropping that site around 40, 45 feet in elevation and spreading all that dirt around. So this number comes up a little bit higher than the other one, we're right around 850,000 without the contingency, and then when you add the contingency in, you're right around 950,000. Then once you add in, I should have mentioned this on the other one, when you add in surveying, the design for permitting and construction, the construction admin, as well as this construction materials testing, to have a geotechnical firm out there to make sure the contractor's doing everything right, you're right around $1 million with that, is our estimate on that. And the other one with the engineering and consulting in, you're right around $690,000. And so these numbers, of course, are very preliminary, and if we were interested in going further now or later, what we would do is put a preliminary design together, and we would go ahead and send it out to bid and start getting some real interest from folks around the county, and getting some real numbers. But we've been doing this for a long time, and we feel like, we feel fairly comfortable with these numbers. We hope to come in as the high bidder.
So clearly, we're looking at other grants or other mechanisms to come up with those larger, with those larger numbers. What we're suggesting is a more limited step. You do have all the utilities in place, you've got, you own the property, you've got the community college and the universal building there. It's right on the interstate, so you've got a lot of things, natural gas is in place as well.
We need to build a road before they take grants for money.
But this is a first step.
It is. Because one of the other things that's also, that with this, we would hope that this would lead to is going towards some other grants that would help us getting water and sewer on the roads as well, that would even give that much more reason. We have it on College Drive right now, but what we want to do is, of course, get it all the way to the actual shovel-ready sites eventually. And so that may be something that's more along the lines of waiting for an actual prospect to come in, and we work with them to get the grants.
Got a prospect, then the state
That's right.
makes available funds that would assist with the grading.
Because of the jobs that they would be able to bring to the county, the state will step up at that time, and it would not require any of those environmental
But this gets us, this does get us started. And as far as the local dollars you've got on your sheet, what we've reviewed with Ashley, which is on top of the 600,000, spending over at least two fiscal years. So we'll push the thing, and it won't move any quicker than that anyways, because of dealing with the federal government. But we're looking at 10 for surveying, 30 for design, and then 40,000 for grading, and then another 40 for grading. So 80, 110, 120,000 dollars, spread over
Over two years.
Over two years, and we can evaluate it, and we're looking at asking you for that within the line item that's already created. So we're not looking at asking you to fund additional dollars.
Mr. Wood, anything you'd add to that?
We've met over this, gosh, five or six times, I think, a lot of good discussion on it. There is an ask, I think, as far as a surveying, I think around 10 to maybe do that in this fiscal year, since there are some funds set aside, there's some benefit of doing that sooner to get things lined up. I think that's part of the further request.
Other comments, questions by board members?
What kind of timeframe are you looking at?
It's a good question. A R C and the federal approval process probably will take this thing out in three years. We've been over, we've been three years into it to get to this point.
Would there be many left that
So, yeah, they reduce it.
We need to get them locked in now.
But from a county, to me, there's two sides to it. One, it takes longer, that's too bad. But two, it takes longer, and that allows you to be real sure of what you're doing, and work within existing dollars, and not get carried away. So, I think it's two years.
Because I look, what, January or July of 2017, here we are at 19, we've lost $600,000, you know, and, you know, it's just, I mean, I know, you can't, can't run
Well, that wasn't
but, I just don't want us to lose some future boards, whoever's sitting here, the potential to expand. And we just talked about that, you know, where we're going to put an industry that wants to hire 200 or 300 people. We don't have it. You say, well, look at all these empty buildings, show me one, and it's usually privately owned, and there's nothing we can do with that. There's not a ton of empty buildings in McDowell County, plain and simple, so.
And there's points that we stop, and we come in and talk to you guys about where we are
Right.
and make sure we're all, we're all together. So it's very much a process.
Yeah.
It was my understanding that, in working with D O T here, that they would put together a letter for us pretty quickly that would support the project, and that would go to Ms. Olivia at A R C. And it would be in hopes that, I believe the funds would
Yeah, the state has recommended it, and it's in Washington, and we've been told everyone's ready to sign minus a D O T letter that says D O T has reviewed the plans and
So that locks the funds up when that happens, right?
Hopefully.
That's our understanding, yeah. Because, you know, they've come, they came to us originally and said that, you know, here's how much we have allotted that we feel like you could obtain. And then we were kind of just waiting on them, and as we've been waiting on them, they've slowly knocked that down because they're giving the money away to other folks. But based on our recent conversations, we feel like this is a fairly legit amount that would come
I don't think it'll ever edge back up any at all.
So the first step, the first step that we're looking at is building the, what you're calling the pond road in with the cul-de-sac.
Yes, sir.
And then a short-grading road
For Shell Road.
Has been some grading.
And then doing some grading outside of that.
$30,000 worth of additional grading in the next year.
Okay. So that's our first
That would be the small step that we
Questions aboard?
Moving, we go ahead.
Motion, second discussion, all favor say aye. I ain't opposed last time. Okay? Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Didn't mean to take so many years.
We need to make sure.
Two years.
We see more ways.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, we have our next appointment item, and this is the wayfinding signage agreement. And we have Ms. Carol Price, Director of T D A, with us. So, Ms. Carol, if you don't mind, come on up, and we hear you glad that we've discussed this, and we're glad you're here.
Thanks for making time for me again. I've got a little something for you. This is a copy of the actual sign placement, and it shows each of the intersections that are proposed, and gives you a visual image of that. I had sent that to you, Rashil, on the website. And the first page shows what the sign itself would look like. So you can see it's got a part of our logo incorporated in it on that first page, and the coloring. We worked with the City of Marion, we wanted to kind of use our coloration along with theirs. So once you're outside the city, you kind of keep that same look, so you know what to look for as you're driving throughout the county. So we've gotten this far in the process, since I saw you last, with all of the work we needed to identify the intersections, working with an advisory committee with the different communities that are represented in the project. And we're ready to move forward and send out a request for proposals to start manufacturing the signs. Once we get those back and someone has chosen, the next thing to do is put the package together and send it to N C D O T. And we had talked about partnering with the county in terms of, once the signs were created and installed, they were in the ground, the county would then assume ownership. But for the future purposes, the T D A would continue to pay for the project. So if anything needed to be replaced, if there was damage, if anybody went out and put graffiti on a sign, those kinds of things, then T D A would assume all that responsibility. So in talking with Ashley, we were looking at an interlocal agreement between the T D A and the county, just so that we would have something in writing about that relationship and how that was going to work going forward.
Carol, remind us, how many total signs is there?
We originally identified 44, but then I think we moved down to 40. Oh, no, we do have that. About 45. 47.
This is going to highlight mountain biking, Andrew's Geysers, I mean, mining, just the
Yes, everything. It's going to be a multi-year project, because it's a very expensive project. It's also something that's going to continue to change. Another example is like the Fontiflora Trail coming through. As the Fontiflora Trail comes through, the first part of that, we believe is going to be in Old Fort. So if those signs are on the ground, and then Fontiflora opens between Black Mountain and Old Fort, we certainly would adjust those signs. We definitely want to promote those things. But mountain biking, yes. And at each of these intersections, it took a little while, because you have to put signs in place at all four intersections. If you've got four directions, you have to have four signs that can be read both ways.
So this is going to cover from Old Fort to Dyersville to Lebo and all parts in between?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we're trying to be as comprehensive as possible, just because, for example, our trails, you know, things that people come to see to hike and to do the mountain biking, the Blue Ridge Parkway, for example, we don't have any signs for the Blue Ridge Parkway. That's the number one reason people visit McDowell County. We do have now a billboard on the interstate, because we have five billboards between Hickory and Old Fort, and the Blue Ridge Parkway is one of those. But the Parkway is one of our most important assets in terms of tourism, and people don't know how to get to the Blue Ridge Parkway because there's no signage.
And we've got the most visited national park, basically Great Sweggy Mountains, in the United States, more visitors per year.
Right, right. And like I said, you know, mountain biking and outdoor recreation certainly is growing for McDowell County, but the Parkway is still the number one reason that people come here.
I think there's an article in the newspaper this week about the Blue Ridge Parkway, is that not correct?
Right, right. I think Parkway visitation is what they were reporting on, yeah, yeah. I was out of town, but I think you're right, I saw a clip of that.
Mr. Wood, anything you'd add?
You do have at your station here a slightly tweaked agreement from what's in your packet. There are a few typos, wayfinding spelled wrong a couple times. The only substantive change is the word "ownership" is added at least once or twice to indicate that the county is, it wasn't really addressed in the draft in here, but
It'd be, I don't know, it'd be number one.
Right, as far as, if you see the responsibilities, I can borrow Mr. Green's copy here, under responsibilities of parties, under, like I said, one, ownership, McDowell County can sense the ownership of the signs. Like Ms. Price mentioned, we will own them for all intents and purposes, but if they get run over, spray painted, et cetera, they will pay for the maintenance.
Right.
And if they need to be cleaned or touched up, et cetera.
Covered in item three, right there.
That's right.
Right, right. And we would work with some, with another contractor to do that replacement, cleaning, and all that. That would not be a drain on county resources as far as maintenance, nothing like that.
And the board attorneys reviewed this, too, correct?
He has seen the draft, not the tweaks that remain, they're not of substance.
All right. What's the most concerning, the signing of the wayfinding agreement?
Make a motion, we sign it.
Discussion, all favor say aye. You oppose last time. Okay, Carol, thank you. Appreciate your partnership.
Can I share one more thing with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Because this came up at kind of the last minute, and I was out of town par last week. Deborah Milligan with the N C Gold Festival has been working since we entered into that agreement. I just had her notes just to share with you about where we are there, because she has made quite a bit of progress. There's actually a new website that's going to go up, should be up and active by the end of today. She's also secured musical talent that I think is going to be a big draw for the event. Sorry.
Oh, you're right. Thank you.
And she wanted to come to talk to you today, but the Old Fort Town Hall meeting is also tonight, so she is there giving an update to the town. But we also had a meeting with the other members of the North Carolina Gold Trail that hopefully will participate again this year as vendors, and that that will actually grow. So I did want to share you and give you an update with that, so.
Great, thanks, Carol.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Good evening.
All right, so move to Adam F. on our appointment schedule. This is a Muddy Creek Watershed update. We have Mr. Bob with us tonight, and staff, and Craig is here concerning this item, is that correct? Craig, and Stephen Banner. So, Bob, come on up, sir. And then anybody else associated that's going to be speaking, Craig.
I'm going to do a PowerPoint.
There you go. Stephen, y'all come on up, I'm sure y'all, just speak ready for us.
Well, let's shoot up clear. Want to thank you for letting us be here this evening, and also want to thank the two commissioners that came along to get a firsthand look at things on the tour last week. I think that's really useful, that they see what's involved with this. Many years ago, back when I was a small boy, I guess, and didn't live here at that time, but some people with some vision in the county got some free federal money to build these flood control dams. And this is a tremendous benefit. If we even make it to the PowerPoint presentation here, you'll see that the dams have the capacity to store 2 billion gallons of water when there's high water or flood conditions. And you never see a headline in the McDowell News that says, "What flood?" You know, if there's no flood, there's no story. But I think Old Fort about washed away here this past year. Marion got 105 inches of rain, and you saw very little problems in eastern McDowell County because of the flood control structures that are in place. So it's good that we got these things, and the federal government paid for them, but then they gave them to the county. And that means the county is responsible for maintaining them and keeping them in safe condition and upkeep. What's involved with routine maintenance is mowing, fertilizing, clearing brush around the side so it doesn't end up getting in the system and plugging things up, and keeping the right-ofways open to get in and do the work that's involved. And so that's quite a bit when you add it all up. With the budget that we have now for that, and I think, I think Stephen said, 35,000 was what they were requesting for next year. But with the budget that we've had, we have to make some tough choices. We had a problem with saplings and brush and briars growing up on the dams, which the only thing that'll really keep them stable is a good sod surface. That's what holds them in place. And so we increased mowing this past year, and mowed twice, and didn't fertilize. Now, you can do that once, and that seemed to help with the brush and the situation, but we really need enough money to be able to keep the, to mow twice and to fertilize and do all the things that need to be done. We have two special situations right now, which are troublesome. The Louder Dam, which you'll see where that is when we get to the PowerPoint here in a minute, we had some right-ofway issues there. The Louders sold the property after many years, and the new owners didn't wish to have people coming by. And apparently, when they looked for the right-ofway, it wasn't on paper anywhere, and they couldn't find a record of it. Fortunately, the R E M C built this new transmission line in Dyersville, which goes right across the location of the dam. And there's a window of opportunity right now, being able to use the R E M C to get into the dam by a different route that's really better for heavy equipment than the route that we went in before. It's kind of a narrow pass on the original louder right-ofway. So if you needed to take in heavy equipment or to do something major to the dam, the new right-ofway would be better. But the R E M C doesn't want to simply grant us the right to drive under the power line in perpetuity. They said for now, we can do that, and that's fine. But in case, they would have to do some But in case they would have to do some construction, or have a building or something there in the future, what they want us to do is get a permanent right-of-way that runs parallel to their line along the edge. That requires that the right-of-way be surveyed, and that it, all the paperwork get done so that the right-of-way is there. They've said that we can continue to use the existing road for the, you know, for the foreseeable future, unless something else changes in that. But for the long-term prospect, we have to make sure that we have the right-of-way. If you had to take this to court, I'm pretty sure you'd get a right-of-way one way or another. We have a legal obligation to keep the dam safe and to do the maintenance. We went in past the Louder property for half a century, and so I think if you took it to court, you know, you could get that. But we probably don't need to go to that expense or that trouble, because right now there's a window of opportunity to get the REMC right-of-way for much less cost and no hassle. And so we need to make sure that that happens, because if there was a change of leadership or somebody different got into the position that's making that decision at the REMC, they might say, "Well, what are you talking about?" And so the window of opportunity is there, and apparently, this has been under discussion. Ashley, for how long, maybe?
Couple, about a year.
Okay. So maybe we can get something rolling on this would be good, you know, to move it along, just in case the window of opportunity would close. The second big problem we have right now with the dams is that the drain valve is stuck and will not open on the Cook Dam, also in Dyersville, not too far from the Louder Dam. We're required to be able to drain the ponds in case somebody would drown, or there would be a crisis of some sort as a safety concern. And we will be cited at some point for a violation if we don't get this fixed. And I'm not sure what penalties or fines might be involved. Stephen might be able to tell you more about that. So we need to get that fixed, and perhaps the cheapest way to do that is to pump the pond down where we can get to the slide gate and replace it and do the work that's needed. We put together a, an estimate. We contacted someone to estimate and look at the situation and calculate the pumping that would be involved. And the estimate for the project is $41,825, not including the slide gate cost to replace that.
Bob, do you know how much the slide gate costs, just a rough?
I do not. Stephen, do you know that?
David, the, I have the original manufacturer and the model number. Last time I checked on it, it was going to be around $960. The problem with this estimate right now is when we put, we had divers to go down to try to identify the problem on the slide gate. And they could not get close to the slide gate because of the amount of silt that was built over top of it. So what I've done is on this estimate, to meet the North Carolina dam safety requirements, we're going to have to install or maintain what I call the plunge pool, but let it serve as a sediment pool as well. So we're going to have to put some large rock and some riprap into this plunge pool. For when we start pumping, once we get it down to where we can see the sediment, then we're going to have to regroup of whether we're going to have to build a road into the riser, whether we're going to take some sort of, maybe able to use water, water pressure and blow the silt out. But once we get down to where we can get this gate open, I plan on having the slide gate on site, just as a precaution, but we're going to be loading the silt and sediment downstream. So in order to stay in compliance with the DEQ, we're going to have to put this plunge pool sediment basin. This is an estimate just on getting the water level down, not replacing the slide gate or any other incidentals that may occur once we get down to it. You've been underwater.
You can pump the sediment out, correct?
Do what?
You can't pump the sediment out, correct?
I would rather not. I, we're more wanting to pump the water, and then, once we get down to where we can see the sediment build up behind the riser, figure out some sort of means of removing that sediment to uncover that slide gate. If we get into a situation where we're going to be pumping sediment, then we're going to have to put in several silt ponds and pump through silt bags, and it's going to open a whole 'nother can of worms.
So your recommendation is to drain it, evaluate it, and hopefully you don't do the, once you state?
Yes, yes, for, and I hope to, I hope that it's a quick process. If it will quit raining long enough that we can get it pumped, get that slide gate off, get it repaired, and then close it back up. Just, just the bottom line, there's two ways to correct this. One is to either pump it, or the other one is to do underwater construction. There is a group out of Tennessee that does that, but we're looking six-figure plus to get them to come in and to do that underwater.
About, it looks like to me, like 10,000 to 15,000 of the estimate here is for the plunge pool work and that, and 25,000 for pumping. Of course, you need some really big pumps, because like Stephen mentioned, you have to, if it rains, it fills it back up, so you have to pump it fast in order to get it down where you can do something and be done. Maybe we can look through some of these slides quickly.
Yes, sir. Sir, Bob.
Oh, I've got it. What, did I just push a button? Oh, this one. You can tell I'm high-tech. Here's some pictures of some of the historic flooding and stuff that occurred in the past before the dams were built. And the federal government gave them to us, as I mentioned earlier, so now they're our We reduce flooding, improve farmland, allow development in those communities. And here's some of the construction work when the dams were being built. See how they build a riser and an earth dam? And I think the next picture shows how the pipe goes under the dam to carry the water to keep the normal drainage going and prevent the water from going across the top. There's one graded and completed. And those are the current members of the board that oversee the watershed. Here's the location of the dams. You can see there are four along 221, Huntsville through Lemon Tree there, and then four in Dyersville, and then a stray one up there in Nebo. All on the South Muddy Creek and the North Muddy Creek. There's the Ashworth Dam, Lemon Tree, Anderson, Huntsville, Nebo. Cook, this is the one that has the current problem with the safety violation. Louder, that's the one that we're, talked about, the right-of-way. This one, you'll notice, looks a little different. This is a dry dam. It's not flooded, and it contains floodwaters when they come, but at times dries up to almost nothing in the bottom. And the Boy Scout Pond, which helps keep the Boy Scout Lake a lot bluer and cleaner than it would be if this wasn't there. County is responsible for the dams, concrete and iron structures submerged for 40 and 50 years. That's a short-time estimate at this point. We're looking more like 60 or 70, I think. So we have maintenance issues that occur. To stay in compliance, we have to make sure everything is working. And a stray picture of the Wilson Dam. It's also in Dyersville. On a normal day, we have about 320 million gallons of water in the dam, dams. During a heavy storm, there can be anywhere from 1 to 2 billion gallons being held in the surplus capacity of the watershed lakes. If anything were to happen, or if there was a failure of a dam, we have emergency action plans for each dam. If you had questions about that, I think Craig could, could tell you all about that. And that's the end of our slide check.
Okay. Are there comments or questions from board members to Bob, or Stephen, or Craig?
Once we determine what we're going to do to fix the problems that we've already got, do we have already in place, or is it something that needs to be developed, a preventive maintenance schedule? And is that on paper anywhere, or is that?
I asked Stephen about that.
Or just something we do as we can?
So we do a yearly maintenance inspection that we did last week. And pretty much that is curtailed toward preventive maintenance. You know, we're keeping the trees mowed off, we're keeping muskrat holes out of the dam. Unfortunately, as far as the risers or the plunge pools or the outlets, no, we do not have anything. And that's where we're leading up to with, with the age of these structures. Everything is just getting, you know, older and older. And that's what's happened with the slide gate on the Cook Dam. The threaded rod, we, we think the threaded rod has just rusted, and it just will not let it up. But as far as preventative maintenance, yes, we are doing that on a yearly schedule, but very little is being done to the mechanics of it.
How did you know there was an issue with this particular dam right here, the...
Because we generally try every two to three years to activate the drain system. We have to be very careful, because once we get them up, if it sucks something into it or something goes wrong, then we can't get it closed. But the structure themselves, we get on and we, and we turn the stem on it and see that everything's functioning. And this is one that is not.
We've got, what is it, 18 dams in the county?
So there is nine in the Muddy Creek Watershed, and then there is nine in the Second Broad Watershed.
Okay, in a comparison to some of the other counties, do you know the number in some of the adjacent counties, just as a comparison?
I would assume we have more than, than what the guys below us do.
Okay, no, work doesn't have...
Some counties didn't take advantage of program.
The closest would be Rutherford County, and then the next dam would be Iredale County.
We're kind of lucky that a bunch of Rutherford's dams are in McDowell County.
We play an important, important part to everybody east of us, really, with these dams.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And in saying that, I think that we need to, I think that our legislators need to lobby the state for more help from them for this. I don't think it's, you know, I know that we assumed the responsibility of it whenever it was handed over to us by the feds, they built the dams and handed over to us, and that was a burden that they gave us, but it's something that we have to, you know, maintain and take care of. And I certainly think we need to try to lobby and...
That's an excellent point, because everybody from here to Charlotte...
Is benefiting.
...in the Catawba Basin is benefiting from that source.
And maybe we could send a letter to the state or, you know, a requisition for them to take a look at it, you know?
Might be to Catawba Valley Coalition to take a look at helping us too, you know, when we had drinking water issue.
Right. Well, another thing, when we went out and toured the dams the other day, I think we're very lucky that this is the biggest problem we've got. I'd hate to see this problem with two or three of the dams.
From what I was looking at, you know, $40,000 is not much for what we're facing, you know, looking at, so, you know.
Well, the counties have the joy of being the owner of the dams. We need to make sure anything that the county operates is safe and in a good working condition, or we assume any liability.
Exactly.
Long you wait to hire is going to be, so there you go.
Well, that's, that's what's happened over the years, the increased cost of maintaining them. For instance, we, last year, it was recommended that we stop the spring fertilizing in order to mow twice to cut down on some weed competition. So, you know, we didn't fertilize last year, but we spent that money toward mowing. And, you know, it was recommended and talked about possibly doing, mowing three times this year. But it's going to roll back around, we're going to have to get back on to fertilizing to keep the fertility up. There's always maintenance needs on access, the access roads getting in there, sometimes it gets impassable, whether it's mud, mud holes, trees falling. So in 25 years that I've worked this, it has become a higher maintenance issue just in the past, past five to 10 years. And it's been everything from landowners to fallen trees to a lot of debris stopping up these, these trash racks. Right now, we have four that we noted last week that needs maintenance going in and cleaning these trash racks. So when they do that, they have to go in by boat and physically hand-remove this trash from those risers, get it back on to the dam, and then get it back up out of the, the storage pool. If not, we're defeating the purpose, because it'll just float back into it. Again, they are steep, they are hard, they're hard to maintain.
Have you felt more pressure put on this year than the history of those dams?
I can truly say they have been tested this year.
Yes. Yeah, a lot of times when you think about grass, you think about what looks nice, but in this case, the, having a healthy vigorous sod is the only thing that keeps that dam there. We all know what red clay does when there's nothing holding it in place, it's gone, so...
I've done a lot of thinking with the amount of rain we've had with Earth and Dam at Lake James. How much longer is that going to last? And I know they went back and reinforced and done some work. I don't see how much longer that thing can last. And that's going to be a major issue if it ever happens. It's not, hopefully it won't be us, but my question is too, what if something does happen that goes in the east? Will they look at us, what you're saying, you know, they're going to look at us that we're the cause of the flooding down east, when they don't have anything?
Nothing in place, yeah.
I mean, I can go back, I first came on this board with the river water basin transfer. Oh, it's fine for us to give them our water for Charlotte, they're underwater parks and whatever else, but here, here we are again. They're fighting the fight for us, and they're out scot-free.
From a complete dam failure, now Craig, you can add in, but the inundation of these areas, if it is a full storage pool, and we had a breach of the dam, the inundation runs for miles downstream.
Sure it does.
And we're not only looking at loss of property, we're looking at loss of life.
Well, I think we're, I think we're safe as long as our dams are functional, because when they were put in, you know, all of that was calculated, you know, for 50, 100-year floods. But the problem that we would have if there was some damage downstream, or, you know, someone killed, the liability would fall back on us in a sense, in the case where we had faulty, a faulty facility or faulty dam, faulty.
Unless this has changed since I got on the board, and I haven't heard that it did, but I was told when I got on that the dams were well enough designed that water had never gone across any of the emergency spillways beside the dams. So it's always gone through the risers. So they've done their job all these years, but it takes a lot of maintenance to make sure they keep doing it.
I think also, we talked the other day when we were out about the mowing, and its contracted out, correct?
Yes.
The same contractor who does all 18, or just these nine?
No, sir. He does the nine. The other nine is controlled out of Rutherford County, so they have their own contractor.
So these nine are the only ones?
We're lucky that those creeks went that way, so that county gets to pay for those dams in our county.
And in terms of asking, Rutherford County has 19 dams. So in comparison, there's not really... So, in comparison, there's not really, some of those dams are a lot smaller, some look more bigger. There's not a lot to compare to.
Sounds like they're doing their fair share, right?
Absolutely. That's good.
Okay. All right, Mr. Wood. Now, this is, I see there's no requested action tonight. Is that...
Not so much in the memo, but I think, hearing the information, I think it's prudent for the board to authorize movement, especially on the cook dam. On the louder, Mr. Coates has been researching that, and there's not as much of a rush on that, but that will take some time.
So, we need to take action on the, tonight, the Cook Dam and the estimated repair cost that we've heard tonight. Is that right? Okay. What's pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
All right. Motion approved, second on that discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, like sign. Okay? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, let's move to our next item on the agenda. This will be our item G, the property reevaluation update. As everyone in McDowell County who owns property has figured out by recent mailings, there's an evaluation that's taken place. So, we have got Tim Kane with, Tim, what's the name of the company again?
Assessment Solutions.
Assessment Solutions. We have our assessor here, Tammy, tonight, and so you're here to give us an update, so the board welcomes you, and we hear you glad.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Based on what I saw on the agenda, I wanted to let you know that we finished with the first week of appeals, but it wasn't, I'm not Tammy, as indicated, so it wasn't that bad. So, it's not, haven't changed that much. So, but, three quick things that I'd like to point out. From a standpoint of the first week of appeals, we have received 814 appeals, not counting today's mail. That's pretty much in line with what we expected, that's about 2.5%. You always anticipate that the first week of appeals, which we're going to have four, usually has about a fourth to a fifth in the first week. 18% of those appeals came by mail, 22% were actually online, 5% walk-ins, and 55% were on the phone. We have started inspections, or appointments as of today. Last week was dedicated for walk-ins. From a standpoint of field inspections, we are scheduled to begin those a week from today, although unofficially, we've already started, we started last Friday. The good news in that regard is that no one in the five teams is as ugly as I am, but the bad news is we're all fashionably challenged.
You may get shot wearing something says tax office going on the property around here.
That's like putting the bullseye on you.
We want to make sure that people see us coming, and there's no question about that. We've also got stickers on both sides of our cars to let folks know, so...
Take those off when you stopped eating lunch, okay?
Oh, absolutely.
Before you get to the restaurant.
Unless I'm eating a buffet, I'm not wearing this into any restaurant.
Right.
The next thing I'd like to cover is the differences between a mass appraisal and a fee appraisal. What we did with the daily help of the department is we did essentially 15 months worth of work in nine. And so, with that said, as I've indicated on previous visits to you guys, we went from a cost approach to a sales comparison approach. We went from 40 neighborhoods to 271 neighborhoods. We have had some challenges along the way. With that said, we've got a few things that we are working on, and that's one of the reasons we were in the field last week, and we're going to be in the field this week. Some things don't exactly fit when you're making sausage, so to speak. The difference between the mass appraisal, which is computer-generated, and it's looking at properties as one of a thousand at a time. The reason that I like the appeals process is the appeals process gives us the opportunity to look at properties individually. We're putting human eyes on it instead of basing it on a computer program, on a computer model. And so, what we're able to see is what is different. Although, again, a mass appraisal is looking at how do we make properties uniform and look at one of a thousand, I would argue that 32,000 parcels in McDowell County, they're all unique, based on views, based on topography, based on condition, and so this is going to make the product even better from that standpoint. Two things that I am always cognizant of, looking at the neighborhoods where we have a lot of appeals, and we've got two or three that are troublesome that they're already starting to work on, and ones that we hear none whatsoever. So, we're looking at those two. The final numbers, and again, this is based on sales, we looked at a three-year study. North Carolina is a market value state, so we are supposed to be at 100%. We're at .9981 with a COD of 11%, and we're supposed to be within 20 to 25 based on Mountain County and based on the difference of the properties. I'll be glad to answer any questions I will have. We are planning...
Just for anybody who's been watching, define the last sentence of the terms in there, so that I know what that .9989 is.
Okay. In other words, what we're supposed to be, what the state anticipates for us to be, because we are a market valuation state, we're supposed to be at 1, 100%, and we're actually at 99.81%. That's based on the sales. Now, with that said, it's easy to say, Mr. Chairman, that we've got between 600 and 700 really good sales during our study period. There's 32,000 properties, and so during, in the process of interpolation and extrapolation, applying those components, that's been the big challenge, and that's what we're dedicating our time for during this appeal period. And I was going to say, we've got, we've already started preparing a more formal report that we hope to have complete by the next meeting, and that will indicate differences by everything from fire districts to townships to property types and everything else.
And basically, what everybody understands is this, when you say a market value state, whatever the value is that is placed upon a person's home, or if it's just property, they ought to be able to go and sell it for that, right?
Yes, sir.
And if they can't, they need to call you.
Well, I would go one step further than that. What we are doing is we're inviting, even if you've got questions, if you're marginal about yours, I would, I'm inviting those folks in too. Because I would much rather have the most accurate information we can get. And so, if you're questionable, if you don't know whether the value is accurate or not, call us, because we're independent, we're a third party, the only thing that we're trying to get right, the only thing that we're advocating is our value, and the way that we will be judged in the years from now is based on where that ratio is. And so, we want to get it as accurate as possible.
And, you know, the board, if we have anybody come to us, we're encouraging them to call, and the ones that have done that have gotten back to me and stated that the tax office did excellent job. One gentleman said he went up there and some man helped him, and I said, "What'd he look like? What'd he say his name was?" "Tim?" He said, "Yeah." He said, "You got him set him down?" So, I'm hearing very positive things about whomever calls in or is going actually up there to appeal, or to talk about their value. And here's what people need to remember, we've got a staff of five that has been working on 32,000 parcels, so you ain't going to have it all right. And plus two, you've been cleaning up stuff from previous, and so they may have missed something. So, if you think that you know something they don't know, call them or go by and see them, right? I mean, that's what you want. You are basically inviting people to come in. There's no hidden thing going on here, they're inviting, if you're watching, there's your invitation to go see them. If you feel your value is not accurate, because it needs to equal what you can sell it for, per the state.
Absolutely.
Per the machinery act that governs us.
Yeah.
And if you don't, if a person don't like this whole deal, call Josh Dobson and Ralph Heiss, because they're the ones down in Raleigh who set all this up, and we just got to go by it.
You're welcome, Josh.
Shout out to Josh and Ralph right quick.
Ralph.
If y'all have any questions, I'll be, I'll be getting a meeting to come see about mine.
I appreciate my value, and I wouldn't sell you mine for what mine's, I would not.
Where is everything?
No, my last reassessment went up 10,000 one time, and turned around a lesson a week, and went up another 10, so 20,000. I'm like, "What? And they were? Just call the mechanic commissioner, you're going to raise mine 20,000?" We laughed about it, I accepted it, I was very pleased with it, because I know what it's worth, what I feel it's worth, and I wouldn't sell it, honestly, not the tax money.
All right, moving right along, let's see, anything else you got?
That's it.
Okay, y'all. Thanks. Keep up the good work you're doing, we're hearing positive things.
Thanks.
All right, let's move to item A under Old Business. This is the Trail Agreement, and this is back on the agenda, Mr. Wood, anything you need to add to this?
It's the second reading, has been approved by the Trail Association and the City of Marion.
Okay. What's pleasure of the board concerning the agreement?
Motion approved.
Motion?
Where we at?
Trail Agreement, second reading.
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, like sign. Okay. Let's go to the Courthouse Project, item B under Old Business. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Mr. DePoyster is here as well. The main reason for having this on the agenda, other than a brief update that windows were installed, et cetera, you'll recall that the original scope of the project, there was a discussion of the former 1P is what we call it here, the lower level, the parking deck. There was a discussion about what to do with that space. The original scope did not include any renovation of that area. There's been some change in additional burdens on the county since the project scope was approved. Since that time, there's been the addition of the public defender's office for McDowell County and Rutherford. And so, we've, this board has approved a lease agreement with a private tenant on West Court Street for that function. I believe they're now up to four or five staff members and will continue to grow. But there's been a discussion about looking at this space below the new courtroom for public defender. And so, you have a drawing in front of you, Mr. DePoyster is here. This drawing is from Mr. Hammerick, the county's architect. You've possibly seen a preliminary draft of it. This has been shown to the public defender, Ms. Powell, and her staff, and they've made a few comments and requests that if this happens, that these be considered. So, there's a foyer, that was a change, there's shifting around rooms, et cetera, but it's pretty much maybe what you've seen in a draft form before. This would provide enough space for their function and would be adequate, hopefully, for many years to come. The early estimate of this is about 310 to 350, and that's based on the contractor looking at the sketches, you know, the plumbing fixtures, lighting, et cetera, is not based on architectural drawing. And so, in order to get better numbers, Mr. Hammerick would have to do architectural drawings to come back with final numbers. So, again, Mr. DePoyster is here, if you have further questions about what you see before you...
Okay. And for the public, they need to be reminded that the state mandated and created a public defender's office for McDowell and Rutherford.
That's right.
And they state that we have to provide space at county expense for the public defender's office.
That's right.
So, we had entered a lease to go, to house these people. And one of the goals of the board, the board is to get all your court people, whether it be a public defender, DA, probation, whatever, housed in one location. So, but, and I think it'd be good for us to petition the state too, and contact Representative Dobson and Heiss, and the state says here again, this is something you mandated us. Can you give us a little cash to help out with it?
Mr. Chairman, I think our district's the only one that couldn't have funding for all this.
There you go. All the more reason for us to... Did I hear a motion to do a resolution requesting this?
So moved.
Okay. All right. I don't know who got all that, but I'm sure you got it down.
Make the decision.
All right. A discussion?
Everybody so moved.
Okay. Everybody got that one right. All in favor, say aye. Aye, okay. Now...
I've got a question about the drawing, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead, Fred.
I don't see a waiting room on that drawing. And it is going to be a law office with six, eight lawyers in there, they're going to have to have a waiting area.
It's not intake?
Foreier. Listed as foyer. See the foyer's in a controlled access area?
That's what they were going to have.
Right. They would come into that area and wait there till they're introduced into the staff.
Okay.
So, that's what it's going to be, okay?
So, intake would be your receptionist.
That's correct. If you'll see right there to the left, it shows a little window into the foyer area.
Right.
Okay.
I don't see that on my drawing that was sent to me.
You may have an older sketch.
Get Fred, get Fred's number here.
Where's his?
Oh, there's his number.
I've got that one question out of my mind, if I have this drawing. Yeah, yeah. Got it.
Okay. Now, we haven't been voting on this thing.
You voted on a resolution, would you...
Let's go ahead, we'll take direct, let's give staffers a request and direction on the renovation of space. What's pleasure of the board?
We just need to move forward.
A suggestion, if I may, if you would authorize architectural drawings, that way we're not, you're not committing to spending that money before the legislature is asked.
We need to see good numbers on what it's going to cost us before we commit to it.
And one of those numbers is a petition to state with, too.
That's right.
Okay. Did I hear a motion that's effect?
So moved.
Mr. Green, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Vaughn, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, like sign. Okay? All right, let's go to the next item under Old Business. This is item C, this is the MATCH program. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir, let us out.
Yes, sir. You had a workshop about three weeks ago, I guess, with representatives of the MATCH program. Again, this is a program that had its beginnings with the Access to Care Work Group under the Health Coalition. This program is now set up as essentially a standalone entity, separate from the Health Coalition, that is funded primarily at this point by K.B. Reynolds. The funding supports several different staff members, several that work for McDowell Hospital, and a few different agencies. Again, at the workshop and recapping here a little bit, you met Ms. Carpenter, who works for the current fiscal agent, which is Community Care of Western North Carolina. Community Care is going through a period of transition as Medicaid itself, which they work with, as Medicaid is in transformation. And so, Community Care of Western North Carolina is not entirely sure that they'll be able to continue as the fiscal agent in this new two-year cycle that's now under consideration by K.B. Reynolds. And so, again, Community Care has asked for the county to consider being the fiscal agent if they have to back out because of Medicaid transformation. So, a lot of words. So, again, the, what would happen is the staffing would continue as it currently exists with the hospital and the other staff doing their current day-to-day jobs, and instead of Community Care of Asheville doing the bill paying, et cetera, they're asking that the county consider doing that. Staff, being the finance director, Ms. Bell and I have talked about this, we can handle that, it's minimal work as far as the billing, invoicing, et cetera. We can add it to our current workload as long as the program doesn't require any additional changes beyond...
Can we build the program for our current employees' time?
There is, I believe, about $21,000 of administrative funds built into the grant request that...
Would that be 100% coverage for the two-year period?
It would be. We could utilize that either towards existing salary if we needed to add any staff, not because of this grant, but someone we added for whatever other reason and add this burden to them, we could do that.
If in two years, the grant expires, and the county agreed to do this, what would happen with the employees? I guess the program would go away. What would happen with the employees that were funded under the grant?
You would have... You would have honestly two, well, maybe three options. One would be to look for other funders like Blue Cross or Mission Health or HCA, et cetera. You could take on the staff of the program and handle it like you would just another county function.
So in other words, you'd hire those people at that point that become county employees?
You could, or option three would be say, sorry, we don't have funding anymore. We're going to have to let it go.
I'm okay with, uh, understanding that, uh, any monies would pay for administrative to our employees taking on this program for two years. And then, um, you know, if, if they don't get, if they're not successful in getting of funding beyond two years, uh, you know, we got competing, we've got similar programs in place already, is what I'm saying. And we've got, we got litter everywhere. We need, the sheriff has, doesn't have enough officers for the road right now. They can't serve civil warrants because they're, they're backed up. Uh, you've got, uh, every year in the audit, the finance department has stated they need to employ, which you might get one out of this. And you've got a host of other things, forty-five, eight thousand for a dam repair out here. Uh, you've got so many things competing with dollars that, uh, we're taking on an external program, which is good, but we can't, I, I don't, for my vote, I just can't take on two more employees for that, uh, if it, if it's not successful then.
I agree.
Think you have to look at the cost. I mean, if you cut back on the, uh, the repeats. And then you gotta take, you gotta consider a lot of things here. So it's not going to just be an easy fix, I don't think. Because you get those repeats, you go sixty times to one person's house, how much it hasn't cost you as a taxpayer on repeat. Kind of like repeated offenders, you know, you try to keep them off the street, but kind of like those repeat, uh, you know, you get seven, eight hundred thousand dollar ounce, uh, or seven, eight hundred dollar ounce bill. And what was, we saw just a few years ago when Miss Vaughn and Mr. Green came along. One patient, they had one over fifty thousand, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars an ounce. So your program, you know, if you can keep them off, out of the system, it will pay for itself in the long run.
But we would revisit it in two years when it ended, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You'd have to.
Right.
If it ended.
You would have to revisit.
If it, if it ended. And I think that's what we've always, you know, I've always thought that.
Would they, and that begs another question, would they be the ones who would be seeking the additional funding for additional years? Who would be doing that? Uh, because we would just be handling the administrative side of it.
Right. There's a, more or less, uh, advisory committee that would be the boots in the ground trying to secure that funding. It wouldn't be me or Allison or whoever.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Move, we move forward with it. Okay? Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign. Okay? Let's go to administrative items under new business. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Couple of housekeeping items here for your, uh, consideration. Uh, the first is a, uh, an interesting item, uh, where we were slightly affected by the government shutdown as it relates to the Nevo Water System. The, uh, U.S. Forest Service has, uh, their headquarters there on Law &amp; Drive. Uh, we did not shut down their water even though, um, they were shut down because we, uh, knew they needed it for their operations. And so there is a request to, uh, waive their, um, their shut-off fee that, uh, is there. So we'd ask that you waive that fee.
Okay, comments or questions for staff?
We did not shut off the water.
That's right.
So they're wanting to waive a shut-off fee.
Yeah.
Explain that one to me.
Our director left. It's a cutoff fee that would, normally would have been charged, uh, to cut them off since they, they were not allowed to pay the bill. It's not like you might, uh, someone could say, well, I couldn't pay my bill. Well, they're not, they weren't allowed to pay the bill because the, the government was shut down. So otherwise, we would have to charge them a cutoff fee, uh, for not paying the bill.
I'm still missing something. I guess I'm, I, I just went to the eleventh grade.
Oh, no, I understand.
Do you?
Yeah.
I'll explain it to them.
Explained to you is that the power, the bill wasn't paid. So out of courtesy, they didn't go cut it off, but the bill came out as a cutoff fee.
Exactly.
So the water company charged for, actually for an action they didn't do.
Being us, being the water company.
Right.
Gotcha.
Got it.
So we can't waive fees as staff, so...
Okay. Uh, any other questions regarding this? All right, let's take them. Let's, let's handle this right now. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like sign. Okay, Mr. Wood?
The next one, uh, this is actually kinda on the agenda last month. Uh, you had the EMS write-offs. And there was a sheet that was left off, uh, with several accounts. And so, uh, what you approved was not the, uh, entire, uh, write-off amount. And so we'd ask that you, uh, approve the, the actual docu, full document, uh, with the effective date of February eleventh.
Okay, comments, questions? There being, now what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion. We'll go ahead and approve these in addition to the others that we did.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like sign. Okay, Mr. Wood, go ahead.
Uh, you have a, another waiver request, uh, apparently someone that is, uh, utilizing one of the websites where you can rent out your home vacation, uh, rental by owner. Uh, they were not aware that it was a requirement that they, uh, collect, uh, occupancy tax, uh, and submit it to the, to the county. And so they are, uh, now in compliance. And so the sta, uh, finance staff is asking that you waive any associated penalties.
So they, they understand that they paid it, uh, they, they are going to be current moving forward. They know how to do it right?
That's right.
And this person initiated the communication, right? That's the way I was contacted by local business to begin with. Is that, so they initiated?
I think they figured out they were in the wrong, so that goes a long way.
So move, we approve.
And motion, second. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye and opposed, like sign. Okay, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
The next one, uh, could be a little bit confusing, um, but there is a, a business here that you have a, a print off, that has been, uh, in our solid waste collection system for about ten years. The gentleman who I've talked to, I think the chairman has spoken to, indicates that he sold the business about nine or ten years ago. He says some of what was been paid and we have record of, of about twelve hundred dollars. That was tipping disposal that he actually did. And there were some that someone else was using his name. He'd sold the business and said it wasn't, wasn't...
He wasn't aware that the person was still using his name.
Right. And so we're not sure at this point who that was. And so, yeah, we really need to just get it off the books because every time, every month, it's assessing, uh, additional late penalty. And it's just clogging up our system. So he has paid, uh, I think twelve hundred dollars.
How much is the value?
Uh, the principal owed, um, it's about eighteen hundred dollars.
Move, we approve.
Okay, I got a motion. You have a second?
I would also suggest that we make a...
Is that a second? Commissioner Green, we gotta get...
No, somebody already seconded it.
Uh-uh.
No, I'm sorry.
I'll save it for discussion.
Okay, right now, go ahead.
Make an effort to find out who owes us the money.
I'm sure you've already tried to find out, haven't you?
Finance, I talked at length with this, uh, with this, with them, and they're, they've hit some dead ends, but we will... If you release the one person, we'll continue to, uh, seek out who might have been using... It sounds like almost like fraud.
It's only, it's only fair to him that if somebody else was doing business in his name and he didn't know anything about it, that we release him from it. But, I mean, we're talking about, you know, taxpayer dollars here on everything that we're trying to do, fix dams and everything else. And then we keep waiving everybody's mistakes. Then, you know, somebody's got to pay the bill. And I used to investigate these kind of things, so, uh, if he ain't dead, he can be found.
Is it, is that, well, I don't think we're across the skills. There's no cameras down there, is there?
There are now. Have been for a couple of years.
Well, the, the, the thing at this point, you're just trying to clean the books up and I understand that. And that was my point in making the motion, aye.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like sign. Okay, that's, uh, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
The last item involve amendments, uh, GF thirty-one through forty-five. And then revow fund one, enterprise two, Nevo Water Enterprise Two, number one, F two, and self-insurance one.
Okay, uh, commissioners, we've had this information. Uh, you've had a chance to look at it. And, uh, are there any questions to staff about any of these?
Move that we approve the amendment.
Okay, got a motion. You have a second? Second discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, like sign. Okay? All right. We've covered everything under, uh, item A.
Yes, sir.
Let's move to item B under new business, litter discussion. And we've got a lot of trash in McDowell County. And, uh, Mr. Wood, go ahead and list out, sir. I know, I know I've gotten calls, uh, I've got more calls in the last month about litter than I have in, uh, fifteen years of being a commissioner. And it's evident. You just look anywhere you go.
It looks disgusting when you look around the county. I'm ashamed of it.
Changed it to where you can't use inmate labor.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Wood, give the board and the public, uh, we, we've, I know different commissioners of college and, and you've had conversations with individual commissioners. But if you don't mind, quickly, uh, for anybody watching, uh, let them know where we're at in the process right now, what's been done today. Then we'll go from there.
Right. So, uh, there's been a, a big recognition, and I think in the county, from, uh, elected officials, from members of the public, uh, definitely that, uh, there just seems to be, and it might seem, seemingly is not scientific, but it seems to be that, uh, roadside litter, uh, which ends up in the lake and other places, seems to be worse now than it has been in a very long time. Uh, so there's a lot of good people that care about this community, uh, including this board, obviously, but others in other organizations and individuals that have contacted, uh, contacted us, I'm sure, as well as DOT, the City of Marion, others, to say, what can be done about this litter? It's, it's terrible. Uh, there have been discussions, uh, with the county, uh, with, uh, interested groups. And there's some represented here tonight, uh, from the Lake James Environmental Association, McDowell Trails Association, uh, NCDOT, uh, Sheriff's Office, City of Marion. There was a, a meeting probably about three weeks ago upstairs where there was some good discussion about, we've identified the problem, obviously, it being litter. Uh, and now moving to the next stage. You know, okay, how are we going to tackle it? There's enforcement, obviously. You can increase fines. Sometimes it's hard to see people actually throw the cup out of the window or whatever, et cetera. But, uh, there's an understanding that there needs to maybe be more done on enforcement as far as penalties. Uh, our staff, the sheriff's office, uh, Chairman Walker mentioned, uh, they're trying to address a multitude of laws, surf papers, et cetera. And so they don't necessarily have the time and wherewithal to look for everyone throwing a cup out the window. But there is, uh, a desire, I believe, from talking to the sheriff to, to do his part in that area. Uh, there's, there was a great discussion about increased educational efforts. Maybe looking at, uh, grant funding or AmeriCorps, uh, funding that could be utilized. With our current, uh, Keith McDowell Beautiful staff person and extension, maybe, uh, bringing on, uh, some temporary, uh, maybe a grad student or someone that's energized, that can get out in the schools and, you know, talk to the school kids that help, uh, supplement our existing programs. Uh, but there was a, a very vigorous discussion around, uh, a multitude of areas to address it. And there will be a follow-up meeting, uh, with some of those same partners, uh, I believe the twenty-ninth. Uh, NCDOT was represented and that's where a lot of the focus is right now. Because there's been news stories, uh, and, uh, local media about recent law changes. And so most folks here and watching remember seeing the chain gangs and so forth out on the interstate and Highway seventy and places, uh, cleaning the roads. A policy change was made by the legislature about a year or so ago, uh, where the state, they had to pay for that. That, that's not free to have, uh, the guards and the buses and the inmates. That's not free to have them out there. So the state looked at that cost to have them out for the day cleaning versus paying a contractor. And again, the state did this evaluation. They said it's cheaper to pay a private contractor. Their words, not mine necessarily, to go out and clean these roads. And so what you have currently, uh, in all one hundred counties, you have contracts between NCDOT and private contractors where they're focusing on the primary roads only. So, uh, US seventy, Interstate forty, uh, NC routes. They have a contract with NCDOT and a private contractor. It's about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, to clean, uh, each year to clean those roads. We had the, uh, a Q and A, I guess, with the NCDOT person. Uh, that means the hundreds of miles of secondary roads in this county are not covered by that contract. And so they will rely on, uh, people with road frontage, uh, adopt a highway program. The availability of community service workers through the sheriff's office, which is slim to none sometimes, uh, people don't show up. And so you're, that's maybe some of the reason we're seeing a lot of trash, especially on the secondary roads. Maybe not so much the primaries, but, uh, all the routes we travel every day, we're seeing a tremendous amount. So it's not maybe necessarily related to the change in, uh, the inmate to private. Uh, because he, the, the DOT person seemed to indicate that the, the inmates weren't necessarily cleaning the secondary roads before. They're definitely not now. And so that's, seems to be where we're get, we're getting a lot of calls at this point.
That's ridiculous that the, that the state even says that. I mean, it...
Well, it is cheaper for them. They're not doing it.
Uh, it just makes no sense to me at all. I mean, that's stupid.
Well, to say that they can't use inmate labor anymore, and then...
It will hurt inmates' feelings for sure.
And then every March, they have a Lake James cleanup and there's about twenty-five or thirty inmates down there on pontoon boats cleaning up the lake. So...
Is that D O C or is that...
That's D O C.
D O C, okay.
I'm more just wondering how they make that happen when they can't do it.
Well, there's probably, uh, the contractor that got that job from the state is probably in bed with one of the, the big officials in Raleigh.
Did I understand you saying we can still use community service workers?
The sheriff's office can, but the discussions I've had with the sheriff indicates that a, a lot of times they don't have the workers show up. Uh, because they might know they're going to be picking up trash and so it's not, uh, again, that's been a few weeks ago.
I got seven things, seven things. I'll go real quick. We need to petition the state to allow the, uh, inmates to get out there and work. And also, we need to petition the state to increase the fines for littering substantially. We need to have the planning board look at something locally if the state ain't going to address it, that our planning board can do something about and hammer down that the state won't increase their fines. And if they won't, uh, do much with the inmate side of it, uh, let's see legally, there's a ordinance that we can do that would have some major teeth to it. Uh, the sheriff's department has a halftime officer now that investigates this stuff. I would love for him to find bags of trash and, and they go through them already. It's like, they can do that and get a name and address and then go to that person. But anyway, Crime Stoppers offer a, a reward. If you spot somebody littering, I mean, I don't know, something to think about. Put it on Facebook, the internet, the county channel, everywhere that this is, uh, program's available now and the call and turn people in. Uh, schools, you mentioned schools. Do a video. You do a video for the, uh, animal advocates, uh, on rights of, uh, animals and how to take care of animals. Let's do a video and get the school board to show it to every, uh, grade, uh, on littering. And, and, uh, then legislative goals... And then legislative goals, every year, the North Carolina Associated County Committees should meet, and that's pushed all 99 other counties to tighten and petition the state because really, the state sets the fines, we have no control over the fines, the state is one that guards, governs the use of their people as far as inmates. I mean, really, we don't have a lot of, lot of places to go unless you just take a boatload of money and hire a third-party group as a county, like they're doing over in Buckham, to go clean everything up. I don't know.
Buckham County was still using inmates on the side of the road, maybe, maybe they were picking up with shotguns. You call it unethical, immoral, whatever else, that's what they were doing.
Well, I come from the jail, and those guys hated to sit around. They would ask to do stuff. I mean, I had pre-trial that would beg me to let them go mob. I couldn't because of the way the laws are written. You had to be sentenced to be allowed to work. So, it all goes back to the legislation.
Sure it does. I'll tell you what, we traveled up 105 about two weeks ago on a Saturday. That is the cleanest road I have ever seen in my life. There was one cup, it was at the parking area before you came out on 183 up there, laying in the road, and that was it. And I said, if that, and I made mention to those high school boys that were, we were four-wheeling up through there a little bit, and I said, "It's the cleanest road I've ever seen in my life." Because it had, other than being in Virginia or somewhere where there's very little trash at all throughout the entire state.
Evidently, the state don't care because you can go out, you go out Nick's Creek Road, you turn off on Little Mountain Road, you go out through there where all those trailers are, those single-eyed trailers along the interstate, right beside the interstate, they're throwing their trash out the back door. I mean, they're just throwing their trash.
Go up High School Hill, go up High School Hill, just as a matter of fact, just walk the grounds of some of the schools.
Kids will throw stuff down and just walk over top of it. We tell them, "Pick it up. You spill on the sidewalk, go get this, pal, wipe it up, clean it up." All right, for sake of time, though. We gotta wrap it up. What are you gonna do? You wanna go ahead and, did I hear a motion to have the planning board look at this?
Send the planning board.
There's one motion there, a second?
Yeah.
Second, discussion? All in favor, say aye. What about a resolution? You wanna do anything to the state, the petition, the increase of fines?
Makes that a motion.
All right, there's a motion. Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
And reinstate the work group.
Yep, that's part of your.
Not just the fines, because you can fine them $500.
Part of your motion's including that, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye. All right. And give, the planning board will give us more information once they dive in and see what we can and can't do. Any other comments on this by board members? There being then, let's move to the next item. This would be Tax Matters, item C. You've got the releases and re-bills. Ms. Wooten, anything you need to add, sir?
They're routine.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve releases.
Motion, you have a second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, like, sign. Okay? Item D, under new business, this is board appointments. You've got a first reading on the Planning Board vacancy, and the Transportation Advisory Board, we'll take that next minute. You've got the Isothermal Planning and Development Commission Board, Mr. Wooten and Mr. Dean Bus terms will expire in April. Both have agreed to serve, this is a second reading. Let's do this by voice vote. All in favor of reappointing, or do I have a motion?
Make a motion, reappoint.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, like, sign. And, Ms. Wooten, we've got a first reading on the Workforce C. Okay? All right, great. Let's move to item E, under new business, this is the Records Retention Schedule. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
This is routine. You're required to adopt, adopt a records retention schedule change whenever the Division of Archives demands you to. This governs when we can dispose of records, et cetera. This is the latest update.
Okay, comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion, you have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, like, sign. Okay, Resolution, item F, Resolution, support for rail. Mr. Wooten, we were in a meeting with, and Brenda, you were there too, with the utility committee meeting?
Right.
And the mayor had brought this up, and, Ms. Wooten, go ahead and give a little brief summary of it, and then we'll take action.
Yeah, this is something the City of Marion has asked for you to support. This would, if this program is implemented, it would be a two-year trial run, I believe, of essentially a bus that would run from Asheville, Marion, et cetera, to Salisbury, where folks could then connect to an Amtrak train. And so, it's called a motor coach system, and so, there would be, essentially, you buy one ticket, and you hop on the bus, and then you transfer to a train there in Salisbury. And it's at no county money, they're asking the state to fund it 100%.
I move, we approve the resolution.
You got a motion, second, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, like, sign. Okay, at this time, let's go to Assistant Comment, and if anybody is present tonight and wishes to speak, we've got this little clipboard here, we need your name and your topic, and we welcome anybody who would love to speak tonight. We have one more item, and this is gonna be a closed session. So, let's do, are there any more, is there any reports, communications by staff members before going to the closed session? Closed session?
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time, I'll declare the board into a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.116 to discuss a personnel matter.
Need a motion.
Personnel matter. And do I need, I need a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, like, sign. Okay, we'll open the doors, we'll get done. After a closed session regarding personnel matters, the board is in session, and do I hear a motion we adjourn to Monday, March the 18th at 11:30? So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. All right, meeting adjourned.